Good evening. Today is Tuesday, November 24th. This is the regular meeting of the Rhinebeck Central School District Board of Education. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the November 10th, 2020 regular meeting?
Seven.
Any changes, corrections? All those in favor? Passes, and we'll move on to report for the superintendent.
Good evening. The beginning of my report, I want to first acknowledge a conversation that's been happening in the county among superintendents. And that has to do with the rising numbers in the region. Everyone is watching all the dashboards. That's something that we all do, all 13 superintendents. We watch them daily, and we have meetings with the Health Department on a regular basis. And there've been lots of ongoing discussions around that. I bring it up tonight as my report, just to acknowledge that within the system, there is tremendous anxiety around all that, and I hear that, and I am doing all that I can to provide ample education and reminding everyone of the steps that we are taking in schools. The Health Department has made some very strong statements, and I'm speaking particularly of the Dutchess County Department of Community and Behavioral Health, some pretty strong statements about their support of the measures that schools are taking, including the protocols that we have with the distancing, with the constant enforcement of the masks, and the supervision of students while they're in school buildings. So I've done as much as I could to communicate all of that, to relay that within the system. With that being said, I do think there is growing anxiety, and I just want to note that. I did recently send a community communication out as well to families, reminding them of those protocols, and including some updates around if you're awaiting test results, that you should remain home for those test results, and that's important. And I think that as we navigate through this increase, it's important to put in additional community education. So that will be a plan that I continue to do, to remind people that we do have a remote learning option for families. So if they believe that there was a potential exposure, that they could allow their child to engage in remote learning, so that learning can continue. And I think that communication is key at managing all of that. So I wanted to start the report out there. I also wanted to follow up with the discussion. We had a number of teachers from Chancellor who came to the board meeting last, at the last meeting. I've done some work on that, and I have had conversations with the RTA president about some possibilities, and I have done some calculations on some other approaches, but I remain committed to finding a solution to provide relief to those teachers in the area of planning time for them and just their overall, you know, working conditions, because we do recognize it's a very challenging endeavor. I think public education right now is a challenge, but we are committed to resolving it for that particular segment of our school population. So I am pleased to report that we have some initial conversations and some ideas. We're now in the feasibility component of that, doing calculations, and I will schedule time with the president of the association to move that further along. That being said, we've completed 11 weeks of school with the hybrid model, so we opened on time on September 10th, and we have been able to remain open up to this holiday break, which is a significant achievement. I'm very proud of the community, of the students, of the teachers. It has not been easy by any stretch of imagination to do that, but I'm very proud that we have. And I'm also very proud of the Rhinebeck community for their measures, because clearly they're doing their part, because the community spread in our census tract and our zip code is minimal compared to other areas of the county. So I just want to put, you know, my commendations out for the community. It wouldn't have been possible if everyone didn't work together to do that. And I think we continue to refine our educational program. As I shared in the communication, there are plans in place to ensure continuity of learning regardless of circumstances. I think the principals have done a good job at getting the faculty ready for any unforeseen circumstances at any point, whether short term, long term, anything, we are prepared. And I'm very happy that they worked collaboratively to achieve that. That's all I have.
I don't have any questions, but I appreciate you working with the RTA to try to work through those issues and come up with a solution for everybody. All right, we have an opportunity for public comment. Seeing none, I'm going to move on to our reports and discussion, and our first one is board governance.
We talked about the format and benefits of reporting out committee minutes in the same layout and some of the names of the committees. We discussed where the committee's meetings should be in group or person. We talked about the option of streaming the Board of Ed meetings live. Viewers would be able to hear, to listen to the meeting, but they wouldn't be able to participate in public comment. Some of the decisions we made on the format, we discussed this earlier too, I think, of having three different discussions, also three different sections, discussions, recommendations, and next steps, agenda setting. The recommendations coming out of the committee are an opportunity for the full board to engage in discussion. They're not necessarily done deals. It's something that we'd like the full board to weigh in on. Names of the committee, this is mostly for Diane and I, because we can't remember them.
Thanks, Steve.
So we decided on strategic planning, performance monitoring, stakeholder relations, and governance. So we did think that streaming the Board of Ed meetings live was a good idea. We'd like to hear everybody's thoughts on that. If it's something we want to do, Albert can get that done probably in December for those meetings. And this committee decided we needed to meet every two months, not every month.
Any, we don't have any discussion items for, oh, yes, we do have discussion items.
It's a live stream.
No live streaming. Anybody that's not on that committee, if they want to weigh in on what you think about live streaming?
Live streaming is fine with me. I don't have anything against that.
Yeah, I would second. I think that makes sense, and it's very difficult to manage the public comment part, you know, public participation in live streaming, so I think it makes sense. But if people want to make comments, of course, they can come, because we're still here and it's still open, so I support that.
I think I may have said last time, I think it's a great idea. I think it's a really nice way for families to be able to observe, listen to, be involved in the meetings, even when their schedule doesn't allow them to physically be here in person.
Yeah, I second that. I think it's terrific to give them the opportunity to see what's going on and listen in here.
So we do have the capacity through the NFS service, so we have a streaming agreement already. So it would be able to be done at no additional cost to the district, and the audio feed would be good, because it would feed right through these mics on the table. So some districts have handled this, the ones who are doing it as a more consistent matter of practice, even pre-COVID, where if they would like a public comment, they have shared it with the board clerk in advance, so we can kind of, you know, work through what those protocols would be for that. So there are some opportunities. If the board is in favor of that, this is something I can get us doing hopefully at the next meeting, if that's something we'd like to at least do a test run of that.
Sounds like everybody's ready to give it a try.
In terms of the committee meetings, those discussions, how, which way to pros and cons of that, or what are those discussions? Just whether they're going to be remote or in person?
Oh, I see.
Oh, I left that out. I think we felt that if the school's in session, we should be in person?
Yep. So next is strategic planning. Which is, who's that?
Yeah, we didn't really have somebody officially taking minutes. I don't know, I didn't figure out. Who fleshed out the agenda?
Who's the manager?
Well, Albert set up an agenda, and then it was.
Well, it was me.
Mark, yeah, Mark.
It was Mark.
I was thinking I did something.
I remember tapping out.
So we had a discussion about curriculum, so establishing curriculum and instructional priorities for the budget process, for example, next generation science standards. We discussed the standards and the district's prior work in the area. K-12 review of a discipline, subject area involving teachers, principals, and student work, and an internal or external review around framework of strengths, opportunities, and future recommendations. Planning for 2021, '22. How are we assessing K-12 student process during the pandemic? With loss of standardized assessments, are students measuring against benchmarks? MAPS testing is ongoing at CLS. We need to establish plans for addressing potential gaps and focus on readiness for each successive grade level. We looked at enrollment projections. The enrollment has kind of fluctuated through the fall. We had 958 students on beds day in October, and the number was 948 at that point. We've discovered that some students decided to bridge without discussing that with the school district. And sixth grade is projected to move from 94 to 64 students from this year to next We talked about state aid projections. We had no idea what aid reductions would be. We keep hearing that there's potential for 20% reductions. A lot depends on whether there's a relief bill from the federal government. We did receive 100% of our aid for October and 80% for September. A lot of this money goes straight into the TRS system. It was felt that aid reductions may be a result of cash flow issues at the state. Tom and Christine are working on a fund balance projection and transparency report. 85% of Rhinebeck's budget comes from school taxes and 11 to 15% from state aid. This varies from district to district. Many, many districts receive a much higher percentage of their budgets from state aid. We look at the budget calendar, and we're going to try to do things a little differently this year. There will be a staffing review in December. There'll be budget review sessions between Albert, Tom, Christine, and the principals. Board of Education work session will take place without the principals, and Albert will discuss the narratives for each school based on what the principals provide. Budget presentations will be done by category and not by the bottom line, and we hope that that will result in a leap forward in educating the community about the entire budget process. Our recommendations were, should the district set up a plan or schedule for examining each discipline, what might the format look like, and what are models of this type of review? And we would like to invite principals to a board meeting to discuss what the next steps are for the implementation of the next-gen science standards, including presentation regarding the implementation timeline and our progress toward the timeline. Next steps, business offices, completing the transparency essa and projecting the fund balance, and we need to establish a committee for negotiations.
So discussion on the, this committee's recommendations is the two items there. So this would be for the members not on the committee.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
Sorry. Discussion on the recommendations from the committee, so anyone that's not on the committee, if you're going to weigh in on those two, those two items. Get the hang of the new format. Who wants to start? Matt, Jackie, who else? Matt, Jackie, Megan, Steve?
You're asking us to weigh in on your recommendations?
On this too, the two recommendations are those, do you have, you know, if you want to, the committee's recommending these two things, but we want the full board to decide if we want this to happen.
I think, I'm comfortable with the committee's recommendations. I think it makes sense. I think I have a lot of learning yet to do on the different models of this type of review, so I don't feel like I can fully speak to that, but I'm in support of your recommendations.
I could speak to a little bit of the models, if that would help the conversation. So in a normal process, there's a constantly evolving review of educational programs, typically in a K-12 format. You can do inquiry around either a concept or a topic of education, or a type of educational delivery, or of a discipline. So you could do a review of a discipline on a scheduled basis. And typically, this is something you plan for on a three- to five-year rotating basis, so we know in two years, we're going to do a comprehensive math review, or in three years, we're going to do a comprehensive science review. We develop a schedule. The different models are an internal audit, where we do a lot of personal reflection, and we do that within our system, and it's usually done in-house by district administrators leading that work. We can also do an external audit, and there's lots of different educational consortiums that do that work. Some of them are peer review, so you actually have teachers of those disciplines who come in and review the program. It's, you know, there are some really interesting approaches to doing that, and each one of them has a different outcome. So we, I think establishing first of what do we want to know might be the right route. What we're looking for is to see if that is something that we believe we need to do, is to get a schedule established, and then we can, I can work with the administrative team to determine what that schedule would look like, which areas are priority first, and kind of provide a recommendation back in terms of the order of that.
I think having a schedule also allows us to budget for it, if we were going to be hiring external auditors or anyone to do that.
Sometimes the consortium that a district belongs to comes with it, an expectation or requirement that you host a consultancy or a visit. So you have administrators and teachers who are part of this group of collaborative other schools, and our teachers would visit those, you know, one time, and then we'd also host a visit where they, you know, you'll have seven, eight different schools come in, and they do a program review. They create a written report that gets presented back to the board and to all the administrators in terms of recommendations about that. So that's an external one, and there's also internal models as well, where we do a lot of data collection. The highest quality of these are when it involves student work or teacher work. So you're seeing samples of student work, and then you're learning about what is taking place and taking recommendations to go forward on that.
Yeah, I think it's great. I don't know if we've ever really looked at anything K-12 across disciplines like that, so I'd be very interested in getting that done. And I think the principal's talking about next-gen science standards is great as well. I think it's something that we really need to get done, and the sooner we get started and get a plan together, the better.
Both make sense to me.
Yeah, I absolutely agree. I think they're both good ideas.
Okay.
Yeah, I just want to ask about the budget process. The staffing review that takes place in December, is that going to include the 94 to 64 sixth grade as well as high school electives? Or is it more general than that, and just looking at staff?
I think it, I would say that it has to include that. It has to be a really, an overall look. It's just doing that earlier in the process, and we will, it will be the definitive, because we will be working backwards to course selection, to have that be more definitive, and we're working on that getting done in time before the budget is finalized. So this is our initial kind of forecasting, so that 94 to 64, any of those trends that we're looking at, I think taking into consideration what this school year is like and any potential gap closing measures we need to do, like assignments of any academic support or things like that, like we're going to want to also plan ahead for that. So that's what will occur at the staffing review, is building by building, close look at what is the current level, what is the projected need, and what do we think about that? And then a final recommendation comes once course selection is, that's a little bit, it's like three months down the road.
Yep. It's instructional and non-instructional too. We look at the non-instruction too.
A whole comprehensive, it's basically our first look, but you do that in the beginning, then we do it again later on too.
Everything for strategic planning? Okay, we'll move on to performance monitoring.
Okay. So our meeting was a little lengthy. We covered curriculum and instruction, facilities and finance. So under curriculum, we started with the Naviance program, which is currently being used by the college and career courses and by the high school guidance counselors. Our students are using it to explore careers and colleges. The district is trying to integrate it, and it potentially will be built into the ninth grade health class as well. Then we went on to remote PE. At the last committee meeting, we were investigating and asking about student participation at the elementary and the high school level, and if our district is meeting the state requirements through the remote modules. So at chancellor, many of the parents are helping the children participate with the activities that are provided by the PE students. And at the high school level, approximately 20% of the students were not initially participating in remote PE, but currently we're down to approximately 10% who are not actively participating. PE is a graduation requirement, and those students who do not receive credit for PE due to their noncompliance will be required to complete those credits before graduation. As far as the New York State requirements, our weekly PE modules and monitoring do meet the standards, so the requirements. Then we move to remote learning model, and the administrators are working with the staff to determine what our remote model will look like in the event of either a short term or a longer closure. At the secondary level, currently the students who are remote will be assigned to a color cohort, and those students will continue their current schedule in a remote synchronous model. And each yellow and purple cohort will be attending the gray, the remote classes as well in the afternoon, so they'll be receiving extra instruction. At the elementary school level, the administrators will be working with the staff to determine what an appropriate synchronous remote model will look like, and they're trying to mimic the in-person schedule with a strong emphasis on literacy and mathematics. We then went on to facilities, and we talked about the capital project that's getting wrapped up. There is additional money, and there are some items that we, were alternative repair replacement projects that were not included initially, and there's a whole list of them, replacing floor tiles, replacing doors, repairing basement windows, repairing the chimney, replacing ceiling tiles. We also discussed, Albert and Cousins discussed a lounge flexible seating and charging stations for some of the, like a work study for students. And although this may not fall within the scope of the project, the principals will consult with Sheldon and investigate the feasibility of creating these spaces within the high school, and that will not be part of the capital project. For finance, we looked at three different things, the state aid update, the budget transfer and negotiation, some of these things we've already just discussed. The state aid, Mark had just talked about, what we, reimbursement was 100% for October, November, and only 80 in September. They, Tom, discussed the budget line items and went over all of those and the necessary transfers that will have to take place, and the district will begin negotiations with the bargaining units. So our recommendations as a committee, where the committee is requesting a presentation of the Naviance program to learn of its capabilities and how it's being used at each grade level. The committee is requesting feedback from the high school students regarding the remote PE program. The committee is recommending the following projects with the money remaining from the capital project, which would be to repair and provide a lineup for the chimney, replace the side door at the high school near the BMS cafeteria, and repair and replace the basement windows. So current next steps, Tom will meet with the Palumbo group to determine exactly the amount of excess money from the capital project. Sheldon will obtain estimates on the replacement repairs of the item listed as priority by the committee members. A priority list of additional items that may be needed to be replaced or repaired will be created. David Shaw will be contacted to inform the board members of the current negotiation trends. Tom will provide a presentation of the fund balance projections at a December Board of Education meeting, and the board will create ad hoc negotiation committees to assist in collective bargaining.
My only comment, all that sounds good, on Naviance, I'd also like to hear how the students are finding it, so getting feedback from the students, and maybe from some colleges or college, I guess somebody outside of our school community to hear how well it goes over with the colleges, not just from Naviance company, but the people who are using it after high school. So I'd love to hear that and that, and the feedback. Everything else looks great, and it's great news that the capital project, you know, is wrapping up. That's fantastic, and that we were able to even have money at the end to be able to do some of our alternates is wonderful.
I just wanted to say, I really love this recommendation of requesting feedback from the high school students regarding the PE program.
May I thank Albert for that one?
Thank you, Albert. I think the more we can get constructive feedback from them, not only on this, but maybe as we continue to think of that and weaving into some of our other questions, it's just a win-win. Thank you.
Has there been any feedback from the chancellor parents on the PE gym? Is that something we could source it as well?
I have a question in high school. Are they, are students scheduled for PE? So when they say they're not participating, are they just not showing up for class, or?
No, that's, it's fully remote at the high school, so that means that they're not completing the log essentially.
So it's just like they're getting assignments, they don't have like an actual class for it?
Right, they have different modules, and they do do quizzes, and they have a log that's required to be submitted.
So, Tom, so the repairs that are being recommended, how come they didn't make it onto the project the first time, if there are things that are in need?
Well, we, at first, we had a lot of, the biggest issue was the roof, because the first couple times we went out to bid on the roof, they came in way over what we estimated. So we held off on a lot of things, meaning a lot of alternates were not accepted at that time, and they have all now expired. So all those alternates have expired, so we have to get out new pricing on that. We were lucky that when we did finally get the pricing for the roofs, it was within budget. So that did free up potentially some money to be used towards going back to some of those alternates and some of the things that were mentioned in the report that need to get done. And there's still a bunch of other things that still need to be done that the contractor just haven't gotten to yet, just because the students are in here, so they're unable to finish some of the things. So hopefully the punch list will get done too and the rest of those things, but there are a few things, like the chimney cap and things of that nature, that are gotta-dos. It's just that we have to go back out for new pricing on these.
Are these the only three things that will get done?
Oh, no, 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 no. No, those are the three things that Sheldon pointed out that really need to be done. Everything else, nice to have, but those are three things that he pointed out that we should be doing those.
But so that potentially, there could be other things?
Correct, correct. But these are the three things that we know we want to do, so we want to get good pricing on those, so that we can figure out exactly how much money's left to potentially do other things.
And I don't know if you discussed this, I know, is there, I guess maybe I had a question of, is it only things that are on the alternate list that can be done with the extra money, or there, like if we had some of these new ideas for like changing spaces or stuff, is that something that could be added, or it just has to be stuff that was originally?
It depends on what it is. It all goes into the scope of, you know, that's sent up to SED. You know, and I'm not going to say for this project, but our last project, one of the things that happened at the end of it, we had money left over, and one of the things that we really, really were looking to do at that time was to put a wireless backbone into the building. But that was something in the project, there was no mention of technology anywhere in the big project, so therefore we couldn't do it and get aid. You can still do things, you just don't get aid back on it. So you want to maximize that aid. So what would happen is we may decide, you know, like, oop, all right, here we go, but everything will have to go through SED at this point anyways. All the plans go through there anyway, so they would give us a yes or a no based on whether or not we'd be aidable or not. It's a matter or not if we wanted to go forward with it, whether it was. It's a matter or not if we wanted to go forward with it, whether it was aidable or non-aidable.
I mean, you know, obviously, the things that need to be repaired should be the priority, but it would be nice to do some of these things that would, I don't know, would benefit our students, or they would appreciate a little bit more than windows and stuff.
Certainly, we're trying to, you know, because a lot of this was repairs and maintenance and everything. There was nothing sexy about this. There was no added spaces or anything of that nature. So, I, I understand what you're saying, and, and I think we all agree that having or redoing certain spaces, you know, in the way the kids may want to, that as long as it's educationally appropriate, like a student lounge or something like that, that I know 10 years ago, Dr. Davenport was looking a long time ago to do a student lounge. We just didn't have the space. Well, you know, space is freeing up a little bit, so we should revisit it.
Just so I can, just so I can, my next step, so what I heard was maybe a little bit deeper dive into the remote PE, like, giving a little more comprehensive feedback. So, I think what I'll do is, in my role as director of curriculum, I think I'll do an inquiry through that lens versus a superintendent through principals. So, I think I'll approach it from a curriculum lens and, and seek from additional feedback from parents and kids. So, we have a real more comprehensive learning about that. Because I think we all have questions, and we want to, I think maybe even take a sample of what it looks like would be educational, and I think it might be a good opportunity to showcase what remote learning is like in a very authentic way. So, actually, I feel like I'm hearing, is that for that one? And then, do we have, same for, sorry, for Naviance. Do we have consensus on those three recommendations? So that as Tom and Sheldon are thinking of that, should, are we all in agreement that we start with those required areas of the work, just so that we have a sense?
Do you want to just explain why we chose these? I mean, so, just so you have a little background, the chimney repair needs to be done. It's like dripping water, so that was why that was going to get done. The side door needs to get fixed so that it latches correctly. And there are missing basement windows that are being, there's like things, whole, you know, foam is what's in there as opposed to windows. So, that's, that's why those were generated, like, that was the rationale as to why we generated them.
I'm just trying to take the temperature of the, so we can move the committee.
All right, so, next item is our, every year, the board visits our elected officials. Each year, we talk to them around budget time and try to give them any, any ways that they could help us out. So, we, usually, we talk about that to see if that's something we still want to do before we ask Whitney to set up those meetings. Not sure what they would look like this year, but, so I just want to make sure that the board still wants to do that this year. Usually, it's whoever, we, we set up the times, and as long as we can get a few members to attend that are available, we move forward with it. But we should talk about that and see if that's something that you still want to do. I mean, usually, the School Board Association also has a legislative day. We haven't attended that in many years. We just felt like this was better, speaking directly to our legislators and not kind of fighting with other school boards for time, and it wasn't a whole day that we'd have to spend up at Albany. What do you guys think?
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I think it's worthwhile and like to continue doing it. Might even be easier to schedule these days if they're doing remote. I don't know, you know, we could do it by Zoom. It might, might happen more easily.
Yeah, I think we should, you know, pursue it just like we have in past years. And I actually went to the legislative day last year, and, you know, as a board member from one individual school district, you don't really get much time to really talk about your own person, own school district's issues with the legislators, because you're usually there with a group from, say, you know, the county or the region, and you're talking about, you know, issues of the whole group rather than of your own school district. So, it's, it's very, much more productive to spend time just with us and the legislator.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not opposed to going to that day if there was something that collectively, we, you know, we all wanted to help push for, but I think our, you know, our, our meetings-
Yeah, I haven't even heard anything about this year's legislative day, so I don't think we're doing it.
Yeah, there might not, there probably won't be one this year if I had to guess, or it'll be remote or some, something. But, no, no one's against setting up these meetings, everybody's for it. Okay. Thank you. And next, superintendent's goals, you have them in front of you. They're much shorter now, thank you.
Yeah, so, at the request or the guidance of the board, I made some revisions to the initial draft. Some of it is even the categorization. So, as opposed to considering the goal of being only reopening school, I titled that continuity of learning, because I think if anything we've learned in the past month, it's about maintaining, it's sustaining, it's evolving. It's not just getting the, the buildings open, it's the entire process. So, I, I made some minor adjustments there. And I think goal number two is the most important goal for, for any new superintendent, and that is engaging the stakeholders, that's the communication. That, I think, is an essential part of, of all superintendencies, but particularly being new to a system, that engagement of the stakeholders, I think, has to be there. And the third one, it combines both performance monitoring and planning. So, it's taking an analysis of the programs and procedures that we have as it relates to how we evaluate those programs, and then the process of making recommendations and moving directions forward. So, that third goal, like evidence to support that goal would be the progress monitoring and then the recommendations, and then the action steps toward that. It's basically the seedling of strategic planning. It's sort of like the outline process, which is, which is reasonable for a year one, because the strategic planning process in COVID is more difficult. But I do think it's a vital part of a healthy system, so I wanted to keep that goal as part of the goal.
Comments or feedback on this? But we're not approving, formally approving these tonight, so, but if you have any feedback or questions or thoughts on them.
Yeah, I think they're great. I like the three very much, and it's interesting to see how it's already weaving through the different committees. So, I think we'll get a really good sense of how we're progressing throughout the year and, and be able to make much better, you know, use of our, our ability to, to kind of evaluate you and see the progress that you're making. So, I, I think it's great.
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I think these seem much more doable, and I think the priorities are in the right place. And, and, yeah, now that you mention it, it definitely lines up well with the committees, and I think that makes a nice big picture in terms of where we're focusing as a board and where you're focusing as a superintendent.
Sorry, there's a little glare, so if I'm looking at you funny, I might just. Anybody else want to have anything they want to say? Thank you for revising these. I think these are more, I think, I think this looks better. And I would just say to the board, so, we'll probably put them on the next agenda, so if, you know, you have anything else you want before that meeting, just send an email. We'll move on to good news. Does anybody have any good news they want to share?
I thought the, the virtual open house for the high school worked really well. I was pleased with getting an opportunity to take a peek into the classrooms and, and meet the teachers in the same way, or in a similar way that we, as we would have if we walked the schedule. So, I really appreciate all the work that went into that, and I thought it was very effective, and thank you.
I just wanted to acknowledge the article in the Northern Dutchess News. I thought it was such a nice article and a testament to all the teamwork and planning, and led, led by you, Albert. You really worked hard to make this happen, and I know that we keep saying we've been in school for 11 weeks. That is a feat, a, a huge feat, when we look around at what's happening, not only in our community, but in the country.
Who else? Okay. Any old business? Another opportunity for public comment, seeing none, any other? All right, so we're going to move on to our action items. Motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent's schools to approve the following consent items. All those in favor? That motion passes. Motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent's schools to approve the shared personnel agreement by and between the Red Hook Central School District, the Rhinebeck Central School District, and Pine Plain, Pine Plain Central School District for the purpose of sharing food service administration and supervision services. Any discussion? All those in favor? That motion passes. And motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent's schools to establish an ad hoc Board of Education Committee negotiations for the purpose of engaging in collective bargaining with district units. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay. So, can I have a motion to adjourn? All those in favor? That motion passes. Thanks, everybody. Have a great Thanksgiving. Wear your mask, wash your hands. Be safe.